Notice of this joint called meeting with the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah and the McCracken County Fiscal Court will come to order. All right, roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McCall?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Commissioner Harless?
Here.
Commissioner Goode?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Present.
Judge Clowes?
Here.
Commissioner Watkins, would you lead us?
Stand. By the God, we thank you for this day. Thanks for this opportunity to come before you and petition you with our needs, desires, and wants. We thank you for how you blessed us, blessed our community, our state, and our country, and thank you for our freedom, and thanks for the great weather. Thanks for everyone here that's concerned about our community, to move it forward, to provide opportunities for young people and families here in the area of education, jobs, recreation. And we just pray you'd give us wisdom to move forward as you would desire and make good decisions for our community, to serve the people the best we can. Forgive us where we fail you. We thank you for our lives and our eternal lives, and we just love you and praise your name for all things. All good things come from above, and we just appreciate how you've blessed us. We love you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a presentation from Parks Department. Mark, you coming on up?
Sure. Mayor, Judge, Commissioners, Commissioners, everybody else. I'm gonna run through. I had sent you some draft numbers from the original work from the Park Master Plan, but what I'm gonna give you is a little bit of what we ran down at the last Park Steering Committee meeting held on May the 20th, which has a lot of those numbers. And it's a little clearer with the charts that we have on this. So let me go ahead and start that. It went through with park inventory, service mapping on where we're going from that, benchmarking comparisons to some other areas, and then the survey review. As we go, and we won't go down beyond the stakeholder group summary, the strategic planning was a second exercise that night. This is where we were, the internal and external assessments, looking at the gaps and the opportunities, what we have as far as the programs. And that's where we're going. Okay. This is a list of all parks and trails in the service area that we have. This, at least as far as the city is concerned, I don't know if it's got Lono Park and some of the others out there. It does have it mentioned on there. It's on the light, and you have that in front of you. But the Parks, Paducah Parks inventory, that's what it looks like. You've got 26 park areas, 640 acres, the different playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, diamond fields, rectangular fields. When it talks about rectangular fields, those are the multipurpose that you can use for soccer, football, lacrosse, anything like that. And a diamond field, of course, is baseball or softball.
Hello. Thank you so much. Sorry.
Where have you been? We just got started. Okay. And then as you go through the mapping, this really tells you that 31% of the people live within a 10-minute walk of a neighborhood park, and then 55% live within a 10-minute walk of any park in the city. That's one of the targets that we have in our strategic plan to hit. So there are service areas. Those are the ones that we impact immediately. Of course, as you get closer to the west end and the I-65, or excuse me, I-24, there's not as many parks in those neighborhoods at this point. The composite areas, the red, of course, is low impact. Of course, at this point, we don't have anything, and actually very little living out in the area in the far west. So with that, it shows that corridor along I-24 and then out to Info Age Park. But the blue is the combined where more people are touched by parks and recreation. Benchmarking comparisons from a computer, acres per thousand of population were a little bit higher, but a lot of that is untapped. Areas in, along the Greenway Trail are, in fact, the entire flood wall is listed as a park. So that bumps that number up considerably when you're talking about that. The percentage of, let's see what it is, parkland as a percentage of the city, we're lower than the benchmarks. Trails per 10,000, we're just a little bit higher, very close to the average. Trails per jurisdiction, we're a little bit lower. And parkland developed, most places parkland is 89% developed, we're at about 64%. And then the FTE per staffing per 1,000 people, we're at 19.5, and the average is 14.3. Operating expenditures are lower at 135 per capita versus 153, and revenue generated $14 versus 58. And then cost recovery, we're at about 10%. And these are the main facilities that we don't offer. Of course, the indoor swimming pool, ice rink, indoor, I think that should be, indoor should be the indoor swimming pool, natatorium, instead of just a, whatever they have nature up there. That was a typo on that. Sorry about that. Similar services, but nature, I say natatorium. And then here, let's go ahead and get to the surveys. This is how we engage the community. We, of course, did it by surveys and things that we took in person. We had mail-in surveys, we had the online surveys. We actually did engagement out into the public like we did in January, and we did again over at the Easter programs. So statistically valid, 600 was the goal. We received 749. 400 in Paducah, 483 completed, and our estimate was to be 200 in McCracken County. We got 266. The web survey and handouts that we did, we had 1,461. And then that's 46% in Paducah, 41% in McCracken County, and 13 outside of McCracken County. Visitation to parks. Everybody gets there for the most part. The national average is 78%. Paducah, 95%. Bob Noble Park is the most visited park, and that came, what did I hit? I hit something. Should not have. There we go. Greenway Trail is the second most visited. Of course, the riverfront with 4th of July, and concert series, Stuart Nelson Park, there's Dog Park and those types of things there. We did have McCracken County, we have Carson Park in there. And then the Ohio River Boat Launch, Cowler Park, the Cherry Civic Center, Brook Stadium, and Paxton Park were all listed in those percentages. The frequency of visits, there's your, the blue is your 1 to 5 visits a year, your green is your 6 to 10, and your yellow is the 11 to 19 frequency. The outer ring is your mail survey, which is your statistically valid, and then your inner ring is the web survey. The quality of the facilities, good or excellent is the blue and the green, and fair and poor are the gold and the gray. That's the opinion of those. Again, the inner ring is the web survey, and the mail survey, which is statistically valid, is the outer ring. Participation in programs, the national average is about 34%. The inner ring, the web survey says 38, the outer ring says 21. So we're somewhere in between those two, and it's close to the average. Quality of programs, excellent or good is the blue and the green. Again, the lesser values, fair and poor, are the gold and gray. Upgrades to existing parks. These were the top results from both surveys. The mail survey is the blue, and the green is the web survey. The blue is the statistically valid. Anywhere and everywhere, everybody wants better restrooms, no matter what, where you're going. They want better restrooms. The top to existing parks that they want to improve and expand, walking trails and hiking trails. Picnic shelters, drinking fountains, security, everybody wants a safe park. And as you go down, those are the things. They have shade, natural area, playground equipment, trail lighting, and sidewalks and bike trails. So trails on a lot of that were, they want continued growth and upgrades with our trails. These are the facilities that folks used over the past year, the Greenway Trail, playgrounds, picnic shelters, the Dog Park, swimming pool, spray ground, and down the list. The most needed facilities. And indoor swimming pools, this is the web, this is the web, this is the voluntary web survey, swimming pools, hiking and walking trails, baseball diamonds, soccer fields, and it goes down from that point.
Mark, let me ask you
Sure.
On that, when the, the question, for instance, walking and hiking trails, we have a lot of walking and hiking trails. It was the question, when you say most needed, does that mean that they, it could imply that they're satisfied with the ones that exist, or it could say, we need more. You know what I'm saying?
Our interpretation is, we need more.
We need more.
People want, people want to go out of their door and hit a trail, a bike trail, right out of their driveway, if you get really down to it. And that's what they want to get within a bicycle or a walking shot straight to any park.
Didn't the consultant say that's universal, anywhere you go?
That's universal anyway.
People always say, we need more trails, anywhere you go.
Exactly. Anywhere you go. So that's one of those. And again, Judge, this is the web-based survey, which is the voluntary survey that people, every, all the users had an opportunity to fill out. The statistically valid would be in the blue, the households with unmet needs and facilities. They want park facilities. This is a combined total of these, the natural areas, indoor swimming pools, hiking trails, neighborhood, small neighborhood parks, and it goes from that point. Most important facilities, top responses, mail only, which is the statistically valid, walking hiking trail, large community parks, playgrounds, small neighborhoods, natural areas, indoor swimming pool, came down on 12 on that, but the others on there. But again, yes.
Ball fields not make the list on the mail-in survey?
This is the top response. These are the top responses. Survey, and you're going out. They, some people who are filling this out are not partners at all. And so you'll get a view from a standpoint, say, hey, I don't need ball fields. They've got ball fields over there. Drive past them. So, I mean, the devil's in the details when it gets to something like that. Hey, they've got a swimming pool. They don't use them. They don't think about an indoor pool. So that's kind of the judgment call that you all this group have to think about.
Was there something in the, in the computer survey that kept somebody from anticipating multiple times, or groups tracking it up?
No.
They could, they could join up and say, we need to pound this.
If you ever, for every email address you got, you could put, you filled one out.
But you have a new email address every time.
Different email address.
Right. When you have a comment on this, the top rated, the highest priority were the ones in blue, walking trails, nature areas, small neighborhood parks, indoor swimming pool, pay bike trails, large community parks, playgrounds, and picnic shelters. The lesser, from the top, indoor gyms, sports courts, baseball, soccer diamonds, mountain bike trails, senior citizen center, community gardens, playground splash pads, community recreation center, all fleet dog parks, and outdoor swimming pools.
So were soccer fields included in baseball, softball?
They just didn't make the list. Didn't make the top list.
Mark, did y'all give choices on the survey, or people filled in the blank?
No, there were choices. They checked off of the, on all those.
You sent the raw data, right?
Yes, I sent you the raw.
Yes, I can send it out to everyone.
Oh, I thought you, I thought they had sent it out to everybody.
I don't think they did, unless someone did. No, we can send you the raw data so you can see where.
And it's got the exact question that was asked along with it.
It has the exact question too, yeah. Make myself a note together.
I thought it was one of the choices.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it didn't even make the, like, 25 or so.
Oh, soccer people just not have email addresses.
Well, no, that's the statistically valid portion of the survey. So that would have been scattered to anybody. That would have been the 749 folks who read those.
There is a difference.
This is the mail survey, excuse me.
There is a difference between looking at parks and looking at athletic facilities. It's kind of subset. You know, if it had been an athletic facility survey, probably a lot of people that wouldn't have bonded because they're just park users. Like I said, they drive bikes. They aren't. They don't have kids. They're not playing soccer.
Or they're trail walker.
Yeah, they're just trail, like me, you know. But now I've got grandkids coming, so you know, there is a different mindset. Sorry.
It is. As we go through our phases of our lives, it does, it's like that. Need for a recreation center, this is the mail survey only, so this is statistically valid. 71% of the people responded, said we need it.
Did you not like the people who said no?
Category value, they have no, no.
Did a recreation or have, did it, did it what would be in it, or just overall recreation?
I would have had the list of what could go into a swimming pool and other things like that, yes. Here we go. Preferred features of a recreation center, walking track, cardio room, water therapy. You can see, the blue is the mail survey, which is statistically valid, whereas the therapeutic pool came in pretty high, walking track, the family activity pool, 47%. Lap pool came in at that. Your multi-purpose meeting rooms, kitchen, banquet hall, all came down in lower, aerobics, weights, game rooms came down in lower numbers. And they mirrored, in fact, that's interesting, the family activity pool came up 47% on both surveys, and the lap pool came up both at 3. So that's kind of interesting, that both hit on that. Now, this is just inside a recreation center building.
So on this page 14, the lowest rate priority investment was game courts at 50, but
At here, that gym's at 31% on this.
That's if you had a recreation center, what would you choose?
Oh, you had a, you had a slide that said, and, yeah, is that it? No?
Yep. This is the priority investment rank on those facilities, which I'm talking to facilities too.
I thought you showed a slide that said indoor recreation facility was the top. Was there not?
It was, do you want one?
Yes.
Yes, no, not top priority. It's that I charter, he would.
Yeah.
Right.
One more back.
That one.
This one?
Do you want one?
I was just saying.
It's the top priority.
No, yes versus no.
Yes, no.
This was a yes, no.
It wasn't ranked or anything.
Is there a need for a recreation center? And these are the things that they want in it, and the highest rated in category.
What do you do with something that says 71% want one, but it rates number 7 at the very bottom as to?
This is, this is one whole building. This is what they'd like to see in that building. Do they think that you need one? 71% say yes. But then this is what they're ranking to put inside of.
No, that, but I'm talking about on page 14, that has indoor gym space, game courts.
I don't have the page number on these.
That's it, you're at the top.
That is.
Yes, at the very bottom says 50 people has rated it at the very lowest, I guess, of all the choices.
But that's the, that's
Of all the facilities.
But they may want an aquatics, they may want the swimming pool, they may not get care as much about it.
The indoor swimming pool's at 126 up there. My eyes are
Yes, up there. So it's, it's come down to when they, if you want to build one, I mean, if they want, as they desire, 71% said yes, we think it's a good thing to happen. Is that where we are? The gyms, even though on that, it's lower ranking, but it's still not the lowest.
Well, no, it's because you didn't have multi-purpose room, kitchen, and banquet hall in the other question.
Correct.
So it wasn't even an option.
That's right.
It's not really fair to compare those two slides. I know they're different questions and different perspective.
Was there anything done in the survey to determine how many people would use the facility? It's fine for to say, we need one, but of that 77%, how many said they would use the facility if they had one? Or was that not part of the survey?
I don't know if that was one of the survey questions.
I just remember a state survey that was done one time, and we asked people if money should be spent on education, and 90% said yes. And they asked how many people would be willing to pay higher taxes for education. It was about 20%. But same way with this, they can say, we need the facility, but if we had it, how many of those 78% would use it, or whatever the percentage was.
Well, I think if it's for the statistically valid portion, I think you're, you're weighing your hat more on, on that. I, I don't think the question was answered, asked, Bill. Excuse me, Commissioner.
Is that, that's really more important than whether everybody thinks you need something, of how many would actually use it before you made investments.
Here's the sports field. 54% says yes to sports fields, that they think they ought to have more. Need for a sports complex.
Let's see the same thing applies to that.
And sports complex, because it's been there before.
In the prior survey, trying to match the same question, so that we could have raw data to compare.
And out of those, the preferred teachers were baseball, softball, tennis, pickleball. Most needed programs, summer concerts, youth sports, adult fitness, youth and wellness programs. Then there's a bunch at 19, including learn to swim, water fitness, summer youth, more special events, and senior programs. This was the web survey, not the, not the statistically valid. This was the one you had volunteer, but that's what those were. Household needs with unmet need program needs, adult fitness, riverfront concerts, nature programs, programs for seniors, youth learn to swim, water fitness, the farmer's market.
This question might actually get a little closer to what Commissioner Bartman is interested in. If, I don't know how they analyze unmet needs, so we'd have to go back and look at those kinds of questions, but that might get a little closer to what you're asking.
True.
Can we get the rest of our, the handout we got ended at page 14. Can you send us this complete survey?
This one?
Email it to us at some point.
You're just on two pages. You've got two per that. We haven't gone beyond that, have we?
Oh, yeah, you're past us.
Yeah, you're past us.
Yeah, we can get the rest of this to you. So, I mean, that's not a problem.
If you'd email that, along with the raw
We can just re-mail you this whole
Let me find.
Slide thing. So, yes, we can do that. Most important programs, mail only. This is your mail-in survey. This is your statistically valid. The most important program out of that was the farmer's market. Riverfront concert was second. Christmas in the park, third. Adult fitness programs, programs for over 50. Learn to swim, down here. So that was the top, top 10, basically.
How many, 800 responses?
749. Both city and county.
Youth sports programs, very bottom, 10%.
But that's, that's still in the top 10 programs.
Yeah, way below farmer's market.
I'm just, it's, as you go.
Well, I don't dislike it, but.
Your high priority, your medium priorities.
It's really cheap to put on. Nothing pays.
The mail-only most important actions, upgrade existing parks and facilities, provide natural and wildlife areas, develop an indoor pool is third. Develop new recreation trails and connecting existing trails. New programs for seniors. Upgrade youth and athletic fields, including new lighting, and develop a recreation center. That is your statistically valid, most important actions.
Do you know if they rated those, or if it was like, choose a top four? Do you know how that question was?
No, it was, they were all checked.
They rated?
Yeah, they rated them.
Okay.
They provide new programs for, or provide more programs for youth and teens, and then upgrade the athletic facilities. That kind of goes hand in hand. I mean, I, maybe if you upgrade, more people's gonna use them, so.
Okay. Okay.
I always think about that, programs being like after-school programs or something like that, but I don't know how they, if they'd even define them. I don't think they defined it, they just left it.
But they're all top 10, as far as that. We did the, the game where everybody put their money in. Now, this is, this is not valid in any portion other than, you know, that was an interesting game. We did it at the night in January. We also did it at the Easter egg dash.
Fake money?
Fake money. This is the fake money.
It says mail only. What is it?
Why does it say that?
What does it say?
But this, the mail-in, well, this was, well, maybe it was. They, they did this all, they did that on the mail-in as well.
Okay.
Jim, Jim took it, I didn't. But, so, out of the mail-in, if they were doing, if you were given $100, how would you spend it?
What's the why?
Is this the same 800 that did the survey?
Yes. That, so, Bill, this is kind of where you're going with it, where they would spend their money. Out of their 100, they'd spend, $12 of their 100 would go to swim, develop an indoor pool. 11 to upgrade existing parks. 11 to build new athletic fields. 10 to new, more trails. 9 to develop a recreation center. 9 to restore natural areas. 7 to expand program offerings, building new parks, and upgrade Noble Park Pool. 17 is other. Just a combination of several others.
Which includes, yeah, maintenance, indoor pools.
Yeah, indoor pool, maintenance facilities, programs, and maintenance.
How, how's, why's other have indoor pool in the top?
They just, that's, sometimes just when they're making a, making a note, some of it's just maintenance for an indoor pool, or the development and building an indoor pool. Some of that's the way, some of that goes. I'm sorry, did I go back too far? Any questions? Organizations used for park programs. Churches. Parks and Recreation Department, state parks, Paducah or McCracken County Schools, McCracken County Parks, private clubs, country clubs, and private youth sports leagues. Reasons for not using parks. Don't know what's offered. Facility program not offered. Poor condition on the, the web survey. So that's a, in that situation, you got, as you go down, and then you just have that, everybody's reason for not. And which is really crazy for as much PR as we put out on all of our programs. Still hard to hit, find your targets. And this is how far our survey, all these dots, if you go out, is how far our survey went out.
So, so the statistically valid survey was, you know that city, that folks live in, so?
City and county.
It's in that, so what, what?
We actually did a portion of it. We were expecting 200 from the county, and I think we got 260. It was right on one of the first.
266, I think you said?
266. And we got 400 and something, 479 from the, so about a third out in the county on the statistically valid.
266?
And there's your demographics. The gray, the gray is Paducah itself. Blue is the mail survey. That means that somebody's had a five, the five to nine-year-old didn't mail it in, but they had, but they're in there. But when they tell them what's in their na, in their family, that's what, those are the numbers that are in their family.
Okay. I want to meet those kids under five that filled out that survey.
Fill that form in. Brilliant, brilliant. We've got next generations, brilliant. I guarantee you that.
Those are county kids.
Oh, wait a second. They're all county kids, yeah?
Oh, hear that? They're all county kids.
So, anyway. And that, oh, but we did, did have the open house, and that's where those surveys, the 180, came in from all over. This was their dollar voting. Develop an indoor pool.
But the top dollar voting on?
On the statistically valid, this is the, this was our, our public open house.
Build new athletic fields got 44,000 on the January 31st.
Right, right.
It's listed second, but it actually.
But then we also did it at the egg hunt, and the pool got 25, 26. And then, but out there at the, at the egg hunt, they, they.
Oh, yeah, the totals are bigger, I see.
Yeah. It ended up coming in second. And that's just kind of when we, we put the stamps on them, on the pictures and everything, that's the ones that really got covered. And that's what you had there. Trails, multi-purpose fields, rec centers at the top. Recreation Center Board, whether they want, at the open, open house meetings, it was the indoor space and the lap pool were the folks that came in that night. And this is if you want, if you wanted to make things better. 95 of them said athletic fields, 57 said soccer field specifically, 54 in the athletic complex, 27 diamond fields, 27 aquatics, 21 tournaments, and 16 indoor pool. That was at the open house. And what would make them better? The trails and natural areas, more extended trails, connectivity, greenway improvements, and more trees. What would make it better for programs? More programs, athletic programs, programs at the amphitheater, and tournaments. Now, I was not involved on all the stakeholder meetings. That was just our consultants sat in, and these are all the different groups that they ran through, where they have one-on-ones with all those folks and, and got their up-close-and-personal comments on these facilities.
Those comments reflect your surveys?
This is, it's, it's different, it's because I'm talking to you, and if you are a pickleball player, that's all you care about. And so that's all you're, it's going to, that's the way it's going to come out. So this is just getting all of their input and that sort of thing. But these are the things that came out. Upgrade all parks, an outdoor sports complex, improve Stuart Nelson, fields, paved parking, disc golf, indoor recreation center, track, baseball, volleyball courts, pools, all of those types of things, year-round swimming facility with 50-meter lanes, dive well, continue the greenway, extend south, linkages between parks and schools, neighborhoods, trails, sidewalks, safe routes, paved loop inside Noble Park, and the trail around Info Age Park. More lighted trails. Top recommendations, year-round tennis facility, more outdoor courts, pickleball courts, some This is one that they said particularly with the sports programs, that they want the Parks and Recreation Department to help coordinate and promote more sports, which would be specialists for, just for athletics at that point, and, and just to do those tournaments and those types of things. City football with access to water and ice and a cool room. City more beautiful with foul hours.
What's a cool room?
Cool room, the High School Athletic Association on all your sports that happen particularly in the fall, your base, your soccer, your football. Do you have to be able to cool down a child that gets overheated and, and is on, in risk of heat stroke? And there's certain processes that you have to do. You're actually supposed to have a tub ready with ice and water, where you can submerge that child to cool their body core, their core temperatures down. Lanell Park is a passive native species. A new outdoor spray park and pool, we're in the process. More adult programs, programs for healthy living, bike trail, mountain bike trails, and the growth of volleyball, disc golf, tennis, pickleball, running, cycling, everything that you can do for a lifetime sport. And then the rest was strategic planning, so. We can get you a copy of all of this and make sure that you have it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions for Mark? Got plenty of looking to do. We send you some emails. Thank you, Mark, so much.
All right.
All right. Sorry. I didn't know that. We're not there yet.
Y'all can do it.
The next up on the agenda is the transient room tax. Was there something different that was going to happen?
We're going to have public comments after this presentation.
Okay, great. Absolutely. All right. I've, I've got the motion here. Great, okay, go ahead.
I move that the rules for conducting city commission meeting be suspended insofar as they are in conflict with the printed agenda for this meeting. Otherwise, the rules are to remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Is the city just doing this, or is the county also? Do you guys feel comfortable with, we just did this?
Yeah. We can watch.
Well, it's all the same subjects. I mean, yeah, which one?
Actually, my, my public comment, I only have one for the recreation conversation, and I'll, and I have one for the tax conversation, so. I think we probably would.
It's to hear from the.
The public.
Comments before they hear what we're thinking we're going to do.
We're not making any decisions tonight, right?
Is there more discussion to be had, though, I guess?
Public comment. Last time, if you remember, we met, there was a request for this next time we got together, because there were some people in our audience that wanted to speak.
They don't have to stay here and listen.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so with that, just a reminder, though, if anyone is here to speak about Parks and Rec, you still have an opportunity. If you want to fill out one of those forms really quickly and bring it up here, you can. Otherwise, let's call roll on this and move the agenda item, and then I'll call someone up.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. McElroy?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Hartlitz?
Aye. All right, Sharice, you're on. Sharice Patel of Paducah.
Well, we'll do the same thing, just do a motion.
You want to do it really quick?
I'll make the same motion, Richard.
Everyone's not.
All right, you're ready.
No one's sick of me yet?
We made sure you were legal.
Thanks. So, first of all, I wanted to publicly thank the Hagan family. So, they're the only entity for the last 17 years that has done anything for swimming in this community. And I almost find it kind of embarrassing for the city and the county, because that's our only resource, and that's our only way to have kids learn how to swim 20, you know, year-round. And it shouldn't be the responsibility of one family to provide for Graves County, you know, Mayfield, the city. And I say this with all my heart, my goal in building a 50-meter pool is not to take any business away from you, okay? My goal is to expand services and to expand opportunities for kids, okay? Myself, I live by the pack. Even if we build a 50-meter pool in the city, I'll probably still go work out at the pack. But you can't depend on one family to provide for a whole community. And if you go to Chicago and go to an LA Fitness, they don't have the facilities that the pack provides. They have three, three small little lanes. The pack has eight 25-yard lanes. What we need in this community is to add and add more services to our kids. So I started this six years ago, and the city said, well, we're not going to do anything in Noble Park. You got to get land, you got to go get a survey. I did that. I have land. I have, I spent $8,000 with Branstad or Carroll and got a feasibility study. There is an urgency to get this done, and, and the urgency is that the city and county is dying. So, in the ER last night at Western Baptist, the two physicians working, one is from Dallas, the other one is from New York. People don't want to live here. They want to work here, use, use the city for what they can, get their money and run. What kind of bothers me is that I use Branstad and Carroll, and if I graded them A through F, I would give them a D. And what we did is, exactly what I thought they would do. They asked too many questions, you know? Do you like lettuce? What do you want? You know, everything, it was too broad. It's a no-brainer, I'll tell you for free, without charging a consultant's fee. Youth sports is one of the biggest moneymakers for any city. And we live in a catbird area of Kentucky, and I'm, I'm just watching it dwindle away. So, if you just go outside this area, why do you need this survey? We have to, our soccer fields stink, okay? And why do we have to have a survey to say that? All right? We don't have, our baseball setup is horrendous. We had a disaster last summer, and we were an embarrassment. And you don't need a survey to tell you that. We don't have, the pack cannot provide and should not provide. A fit, swim and fitness center should not provide for water polo, a diving well. These are things that should not be on, on their shoulders. But we don't have those facilities. Kids in the city drowning, number one cause of death. There's no, there's no resource to get the kids in the city to even learn how to swim. So, we, we've been on this journey for six years, but I'm telling you that I think we're about five years away from this city becoming either really good or really, really bad. And again, the services that, that we, we've been through last year, the city got involved with us, and we're just slowing the whole process down. You know, we had a meeting, what, last Tuesday night, which I know, Jim, you couldn't make, but I'm finding out, oh, we're now another couple of years away from doing this. We keep kicking the can down the road, we're going to miss our opportunity here, because I, I think other towns like Elizabeth Town, Owensboro have already surpassing, surpassing us. And I've, I've been out to DC, I met with Jamie Comer, and his advice to me is, well, the problem with you guys is that the city and the county don't sing out of the same hymn book. And I'm, I'm not a big fan of, we have two separate city and county, and then duplication of all these services, but if you want to continue having this, then prove to the citizens that you guys can work together and get this done. But we're, we're ready to move, we're, you know, we formed a Friends of the Park 501 nonprofit that is ready, willing, and able to try to get some money, but you're moving so slow. Last year, we wanted to get this done because the Eckstines approached me, and, and Ray wanted to see you get this done, and, you know, Ray's passed away. But the longer we wait on this, I mean, the longer we wait on getting, not only what I, what I would like to see is, is the, is the nataatorium and offer services that, you know, athletic centers shouldn't offer, a diving well, et cetera, and, and get more kids involved in sports. So right now, if you don't play basketball, you don't play football, you know, you don't have a niche. You don't, you don't have anything offered. But we have to get this done, and there has to be some sense of urgency as they're, and I'll speak for, like, this is my, that's my number one priority, but to talk to the people who are here for soccer and softball, we're playing soccer on the dump. And so, that's not, that's not seen on the survey, but all you need to do is open your eyes, look around at this town, or go drive anywhere else in Kentucky and look at their towns. So, I thank you for your time.
I have a question. You guys want to ask questions?
Thank you, Dr. Patel. Amen, I agree with you 100%. Do we have any, you probably already have, as far as what you need, how much money is it going to cost? Not counting the land?
Yeah, we, we have, I have an entire feasibility study, and it depends on what we want to build. You know, you cannot, you cannot please everyone to go, say, you know what, I want to have a pool that has a lazy river. Well, we're not going to do that. My number one goal is to have a pool where we can have city kids and some of the county kids, hey, there's a place to play water polo, and there's a diving well. Okay, that's got to be the number one priority, is to have other facilities. My number one goal is to have a pool where we can have city kids and some of the county kids, hey, there's a place to play water polo and there's a diving well. Okay, that's gotta be the number one priority, is to have other facilities so that we have a learn-to-swim for the city kids. We have other opportunities. We are, and I'm not exaggerating, I'm 53-years-old, that we had, we had water polo at our high school. Okay? We are 30-years behind the curve without, without, you know, and that survey doesn't reflect that at all.
Well, just the basics for Paducah Swim Team and what the services that we need to offer, what's a ballpark figure? How much money, again, not, not counting land, we got land?
We could build, probably $8 million, we could build a pool. Melanie, right? $8 million will build a pool. And we were, and we were even, I was at the point where, you know, hey, if, there are donors in this area that could write that check. And you know that, we know that. But I do think we need to have the city and the county involved because it's, it's the maintenance. So, it's 250,000 probably a year to upkeep and maintain it. But, you know, it's, for me, it's almost embarrassing. They could, these, the Hagan family is doing it. They're doing it. And we should be able to build something twice as big and have, offer facilities, offer things that, that, like I said, a swim and fitness center shouldn't offer, like diving and water polo and all those other activities for kids.
What's the footprint? On the, on the land? If we're looking at land, what's the footprint?
We could do it for, you know, what was the, we're looking at four acres, right? We have, we actually had, we had donor, donor give us four or five acres off of, like I said...
I mean, if, if we're looking at, what's the footprint of the building?
I'd have to, I mean, I'd have to look at our feasibility study and all.
I'm interested in that answer and you can give it to me sometime.
Yeah, I have, I have all that information, but it is all, this has got drug on so much. We've actually had other plans made, other, you know, we have several variations. Okay, Olympic-sized pool is a different footprint than if we just did other, other variations of it.
And that's what I'm interested in, is the footprint needed for the pool that you think our community needs, not, not, not everything else that might go with it in a rec center.
No, I want to, I want to, like, keep it simple. A, you know, 50-meter pool with a diving well would have so much use and modularity to, you know, offer a ton of other programs that you can't, you can't have in a 25-yard pool. And again, this is not to take anything away from the pack at all, but this is to add more opportunities for our kids and our youth sports.
Dr. Patel, I really appreciate your passion and support. Thank you for that. I'm interested, I know you talked to, you said you talked to Congressman Comer, but, you know, some of those, Congressman Comer, some of those communities in the state use restaurant tax to do that, which Paducah cannot. And I just wondered, have you talked to any of our state legislators about that potential funding source?
Yeah, well, I don't know how to do it. That's what, that's what you guys are here for.
And we have, I'm just asking if you have.
But I don't know why, I don't know why, but, but, I mean, I'm not, it doesn't make sense to have this small of a community to have two separate governments. And, and that's, and that, that's what Jamie is saying, is that you're not gonna get a restaurant tax when you have a town of, you know, whatever the population of the city is in the population, but you combine city, county, and boom, now you have a bigger draw area.
That does not, that's not true.
I, I mean, this is, this is what I've been told.
That's not true.
And then I also see, you know, places like Nashville, which combined, combined governments and explode.
All right, I'm gonna wrap us up because I had someone else come up to do that. So, thank you so much for being here, Dr. Patel. I really appreciate it. Really appreciate it and all your work. Matt Wirth, oh, sorry, do you need to address something?
I'd just like to say that I hear that about the city and county won't work together and, you know, there was, I don't know, what was it, six years ago or thereabouts, there was on the, a vote held whether we wanted to do a joint city-county government, it was voted down like, I think, 70 to 30.
70, 30, yeah.
Eight years ago.
It was eight years ago. And so, for whatever reason, the community voted that down, but I know that, I know that you and Bob Leeper for the last four years met...
Two and a half.
Two, oh, yeah, two and a half for the last, he was, had four years, you came in two and, two and a half ago, but y'all worked together. I was not in, I was just in for six months, but you and I have been meeting weekly and we've got, having these joint meetings, we're gonna talk about a, combining our resources with two convention and visitors bureaus to try to bring more, more money in. We're, we're planning together, we're trying to work together. I think, I do hear that as a response that the city and the county can't get along, but you've got to go back several years, I think, to, and I'm not even sure about that. Maybe it was a little bit of tension over the years, but certainly not now. And we're trying to do everything we can, I think, for the good of the community and general county and within the city. And so, we work hard together and we all know each other and I think we're all hitched to the same wagon trying to get things done. And I appreciate the comments, I'm not trying to, the thing about the tax is that there's a statute that says that, was it under, over 4,000 population?
On the restaurant tax?
Yeah.
Second-class cities.
It had to be a fourth or fifth-class city in 2010, which they no longer do the classes, in order to, to use that tax. And it's, it's an unconstitutional scheme in which we are on the, on the wrong side of it. And eventually, someone will pay attention and they'll...
There are 33, I believe it's 33 cities in Kentucky that can't do that. We don't have the same opportunity as like Elizabeth Town, which was a fourth-class city, to do that. That's just the reason I was asking, it is a state statute.
And maybe we can get that changed.
We've been trying for many years, but I think we keep trying.
There's a theory behind it.
It would be a good funding source.
We're making more racket about it.
All right, I'm gonna call the next public comment, if that's okay. Matt Wirth of Paducah.
Hello, good evening. I don't have my comments prepared, so you'll have to forgive me, I'm speaking a little off the cuff. I would like to agree, I guess, that the number one priority, in my opinion, should be the growth of this area, the city, the county, whether it's combined or not, you know, is maybe a topic for another day. But I am concerned about a dwindling environment. I'm from here, I went to U of L, Louisville, lived there for, for a while, and I'm concerned about our community not growing. I'm concerned about us not being able to find businesses to move here. I'm concerned about the businesses that are here not being able to hire people to get to draw them to come to work here. I know of, you know, some examples of that firsthand, kind of like Dr. Patel was, was mentioning. My kids are heavily involved in soccer, so for me, soccer is the number one, you know, item on the list, but I think ahead of that, I would say getting youth sports here to help this community grow and bring money in, bring tourists in. We go out of town a lot. We started out with Puma's FC years ago. Gosh, it's been, you know, eight or 10 years now, it seems like, but we would go and do tournaments when we first started and we would go spend a weekend out of town, three or four weekends a season, and we'd spend, you know, lots of money in hotel rooms and restaurants and all that. We've since joined the St. Louis Youth Soccer League. The Puma's FC have, I couldn't quote the number, I'm sure it's in a lot of the information you guys have gotten, the number of teams that this organization that's based right here in Paducah that's growing, we're taking all of our kids, all of our teams to St. Louis to play soccer because the facilities here are not, it's a dump. You can't, you can't have stuff there. We can't, we can't host anything. One, at the fiscal court meeting, we talked about, we had a game day through Puma's planned. We had lots of teams coming in from out of town, I can't remember the number, but we had a whole day planned and they had worked really hard from eight to eight to get it all worked in on the few fields that we do have, and we couldn't have it because there was rain the day before. The day of was beautiful. It was a beautiful day, but we couldn't have it because the facility, there was standing water and we've got videos of them pumping water off the fields, literally ankle-deep, knee-deep. So, for us, soccer is the thing, but ahead of that is getting something, anything here to bring in people and bring in money into this community. So, I guess that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did a great job off the cuff.
Yeah, you did.
All right, that's my last one on the Parks and Rec, so we'll move on, if that's okay, to the next agenda item.
Can I ask a question here? Are we gonna have some kind of plan? Are we gonna wait till after we talk about the funding in terms of where we're headed with this?
There are some things in the plan for the transient tax that we will discuss in regards to what we just heard.
All right.
And I think Jim made some copies of the proposal that you all received via email, right? Okay, before this meeting? And so, we'll open that part of the meeting up for discussion.
We'll keep public comments or just us?
Let's start with us and then we can bring it back to public.
You all have yours.
Just in case you need it. So, what's in front of everyone here is a potential kind of items of interest document. The judge, myself, the city manager, Jim Arndt, the deputy judge, Steve Doolittle, Mary Hammond from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the county attorney, also the CBB's attorney, we've been meeting over the last couple of weeks and talking about if we were to make a transition and add a second Convention and Visitors Bureau to our community, what are some ways that we could do that? And so, we've kind of just thrown this stuff through a lot of kind of deliberation together to start the conversation because we've got to have a way to start the path somehow. So, this is the, that way forward. I'll do a little bit of an overview for the audience so they kind of understand, if that's okay with everyone. I won't read each item line by line, but just kind of an overview for the audience to understand what we're looking at here. And then this will be available on our website, I'm assuming, in the meeting packet afterwards? If not, we'll put it on there. How about that? Is that okay? All right. So, the, the concept of, currently, we have a Convention and Visitor Bureau that can levy the 3% tax. There is a thought that, and thank you, Commissioner Jones, for all your research on this, you got this conversation started. So, we are, right now, some of the items of interest are that the city would absorb the current Convention and Visitors Bureau. And before I go further, let me just make, kind of, set the stage here. Judge Clymer always says we're making sausage in public and that's what we're about to do. So, is everyone ready for this? Because this is a really tough conversation to have on camera and with all of us. So, let's just lean in and engage it because our community is asking us to do this. So, let's, let's just dive in, okay? So, so, one of the proposals on the table here is that the city would absorb the current CBB. As we sit right now, there is a joint agreement that created a joint city-county CBB. We would tear that apart in a very kind, friendly way. The city would then absorb that CBB, so we would be the owners of the current CBB per se. It would be, we would then also be levying the 3% tax, the city would be, so we could fund the current CBB as they, as they stand. They will then serve as the primary marketing arm for all tourism related in the county and that would include sports and recreation. So, if we kind of think about this, our CBB has been around for a really long time and the institutional knowledge of the tourism industry, which is a multi-billion-dollar industry, is really well-known in that organization. So, it's kind of one of those things, like, you use what you got, right? And so, leveraging the knowledge and the expertise of our current CBB, we would ask them to be the promotion side of everything that we do, including sports and recreation. We would also have the new county CBB, which I'll get to in a second, would then, of course, contract with that city CBB for the promotion of any kind of sports and rec that we would do, once again, because there's expertise in our community that we don't want to see not utilized. Going into the county's role, the county would create that new CBB, as you guys have been discussing at your board meetings, that you would then be able to levy that new 3%. And then, the proposal here is that that new 3% would be used for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a new tournament worthy, it's a very key word, I think, in this document, soccer complex, baseball quadplex, and a softball quadplex. And then, of course, contract with the city, the city CBB for the promotion, as I mentioned before. As of now, kind of the desired sports complex, and I'll make sure to circle back around on the recreation conversation, recreation center and aquatics conversation in just a minute because it doesn't quite fit into this funding source. But that is the construction of the softball quadplex, the baseball quadplex, and then, this has six soccer fields, I don't think we've, anybody's landed on the number of soccer fields yet necessary, so we'll leave that TBD. We think that that could generate about $1.2 million a year and that the thing that we discussed in our meetings over the last couple of weeks was...
Not the soccer field, but, but the...
The tax would bring in 1.2 million a year. And then, the proposal here is that we would use 70% of that to borrow the money needed to build the sports complex. So, that would be the soccer, the baseball, and the softball. And then, 20% of it be utilized for maintenance and operations, and then 10% of that be used for that marketing and promotions that's needed to make sure we bring in the tournaments. That's kind of the overview that's right in front of you. And then, we would do some four-way interlocal agreement so that we're all privy to that and we're all in agreeance to kind of the way forward and how we would move forward as two bodies. We would have a four-way interlocal agreement between the city CBB, the county CBB, the fiscal court, and the city commission. So, with that, I see the judge has some notes, so that might mean you're gonna get us started on a conversation, or does anyone else have anything?
He's covered every one of them. Were you looking over?
Oh, it's cheating. Yeah. So, anyone want to get us started? Any conversation questions?
I just want to make one comment, that this is just a working document, this has not been agreed to by the fiscal court and the city commission. I think we still have a lot of work to do to...
That's right.
Plan the, but this is just a proposal. It's not been agreed to that we'll do it that way.
That's very true. That's right. Tonight, it's on the table for discussion, so we need to get to that agreement that you're speaking of by talking about that tonight and determining what things do you like, do you not like, what kinds of things do you think we need to dig into further in an effort to get this ball rolling?
Yeah, I think, well, if you...
By all means.
If you want me to help to get the ball rolling, I'll, I'll do that. One of the things I think we'll have to be careful about, because I think this is a set of statutes that we'll need to follow religiously, as we do all of them, but this one in particularly. And one of the things that struck me as I read Jim's memo is that, a reminder that the 91A 390, that's the statute that says we could use a portion of this for something other than promoting and marketing. It has in there that we have to keep, that we can only do so, the governing body can only do so upon the advice and consent of the commission, which is why you're probably saying it has to be a four-way agreement. So, I think it's just important to understand that we're talking about the advice and consent of two commissions that don't yet exist and would have to exist before anything would be binding.
So, I think the conversation we've been having is that that's gonna be seven board, seven new board members, well, seven board members of the current CBB and then seven new board members of a new county CBB, so that's 14 people. And, and I think it's, as leaders, as elected leaders in our community, it would be, I think, responsible for us to give guidance to that new commission. That new commission will not have been spending the amount of hours that we have been spending and thinking about this. So, this is, this is, I think, the notion in our meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, was to give guidance and direction to the new group.
I'm not suggesting that we just sit around and do nothing until we get them, but I guess what I am suggesting is, is that I don't know that we need to necessarily pause on getting them. And I think that going to pursue this way, it's probably ripe to form those two commissions.
And we've, and we've had that discussion kind of back and forth, but it's, it is, I feel confident and I think the county is confident it's something that needs to be done, it's just how you're gonna do it. And I told the mayor, I've not heard from the city commissioners or the city folks all behind it. They, yes, we, particularly from what we've heard from these folks today, we have an opportunity to get some funding from this transient room tax. I know there's people here, I think, that want to speak and probably speak in opposition to it, but... to it, but the theory being, and it's, I think it's a good theory, is that, you know, people who stay in the hotels then would be paying, as a result of this, an additional 3% room tax. It'll generate, as you say, somewhere a million, million-two in revenue. And in theory, and I think in reality, what will happen is we will take that money, we'll build sports, soccer, baseball, softball, nice facilities, tournament-worthy facilities. And in turn, that brings people into the community, and they're gonna stay in those hotels. And so it's not a one-way street. It's, the hotels are gonna be charging an extra 3%, but I believe, I'm confident, that it'll bring more people in that'll stay in those hotels to pay that 3%. And so the revenue goes up even though 3% is used because it's a self-perpetuating thing. That money generates more tourism, the tourists stay in the hotels, and so it perpetuates itself, and it's a good source for revenue to do what we wanna do. And I share the thoughts of the others that we are literally playing soccer on a dump. And it is really bad. And I think we're all set to try to do something about that, and there's a little problem with having money, you know? It's like maybe that survey.
Always a problem.
Yeah, we'd like to have a, whatever, you'd like to have, I'd like to have a lot of stuff, you know? What are you gonna spend your money on? And so, but I think we can break that down, and I think we'll all work together. And I'm hearing 1,200, 1,500 kids that play soccer, maybe that many or more that play baseball and softball, and that group, I'm sure overlaps.
There'll be more if we have good facilities also.
Yeah. And of course, the theory behind this is it's tourism, and that's the whole basis for this statute and this process that we're looking at doing is tourism. It's not just for our local kids, because that really would be contrary to the intent of the whole statute, is that we're bringing outside people and promote tourism. And so I might just have good facilities. I agree. I don't agree that this community's dying. I think we're strong, and I think we're getting stronger. And with this, I think we'll proceed on and you'll see great things. And I think with these two boards, I mean, I'm very impressed with the folks that are on here, impressed with my guys, who I call Jeb, Jeff, Eddie, and Bill. They put a heck of a lot of work in for very little money. And so we're working hard, and I know you guys are too, and I think the community's really gonna benefit from this. We just gotta get the flesh on the skeleton and figure out how this is all gonna be done. But I think it's extremely positive.
I have, go ahead. He's a gentleman. Couple of questions, three actually. First, how do we make sure this doesn't become county-city? You know what I'm saying? The county's doing sports, the city's doing the Carson Center and the quilt and all that kind. How do we avoid that as we do these two boards? And how does the city feel like they're a part of that and they have input? Even though we're in the county, there's definitely a divide there. And as we have two boards, it seems like it almost makes that divide stronger to me.
Well, you're beating me.
You live in the city, too.
I do live. And I do have concerns about how this could actually work well with a four-way agreement. And I think that may be tough to do. I don't know that anyone else, any other community in Kentucky has tried to do it quite this, in such a complicated way. I'm not sure that's doable, to be honest with you. We may be expecting a little more harmony than we have in us because, but we do have different goals, and we do have different, slightly different missions. But one of the ways we can, we don't necessarily have to do everything together to do everything together.
Right.
We can divide labor. You guys are gonna do this, and we're gonna do that.
Right, oh, I agree.
And I think it will be tough to necessarily look down the road, six years from now, and know that, well, this is actually not a city and a county commission, it's actually a joint commission even though we're charging two separate taxes. I think we have to be careful, and that's what I'm saying, I think we have to religiously follow this statute to not create, you know, sort of a sham organization just to be able to charge the extra tax. I think they do have to operate separately. So while I'm very comfortable with the idea of going this way and figuring out what we can do jointly together, I see, for example, let's say, you know, in fact, me saying the word sportsplex, according to some of my friends, has become a drinking game, so I'm trying to say it less in public meetings, but let's say that the county wanted to buy the sportsplex. Well, the city might say, well, we don't wanna do that. That's not in the city, that's not a good idea. So how do we formulate this in a way that we don't lose our ability to be county government and fulfill our needs to be responsible, not just to the 25,000 city citizens who are also in the county, but also to the 40,000 who don't live in the city?
I think that we owe it to the community to do the four-way agreement, Commissioner Jones, because every other community, when you look across the state, if you've asked anyone who's experienced the city CBB versus the county CBB, I haven't run across an example yet where that didn't happen because of an infighting between the two governments, that it was almost because of lack of harmony. And I think we're all so committed to doing this in a harmonious way that perhaps we do have to pave new ground and do new things that haven't been tried before. And I think the interlocal agreements can look so many different ways, right? They can be very high-level, and they can be very detailed, and perhaps we have to get started with just a high-level approach on it, just so that we can pave the path to be able to do something. But I think that we're paving new territory here, because, like I said, most examples I've seen are typically these governments not sitting in the same room agreeing to how to do that, it's the two governments separating themselves from each other because they couldn't get along. So I think that's an important point to make.
Excuse me, a couple of things. One, I think this format, I think the first time I saw it, I think I hit you back and said, and my comment was, it'd be a nice piece to get out in front of me, to look at, to see what this looks like. I think this offers a great infrastructure, if you will, of how this would be set up. And as far as the concern of, you know, how do we keep this thing from going off-rail? And I really think that everybody, everybody in the room is on the same page, is we need to get this done for our community and the kids in it. Now, when we, if you think about some of the things that's happened in this community, when you talk about the community scholarship program, that was something that everybody in the room agreed on, we're gonna make this work, and we're gonna continue to make it work. So those, when we talk about putting this board together, whoever those folks are, that everybody understand what the goal is, short-term, long-term. And I think we can find those folks, I think those folks out there are wanting to, wanna participate in something like this, and it is, and it may break some ground, and then we'd be the model. But you understand, you deal with individuals, but we need to remind ourselves of why we're doing what we're doing, because everybody talks about, we're talking like $15 billion annually in new sports, and they drive right by us. So sooner or later, we need to, it's like, you know what? Let's put something together and give this a shot. And I think we can do this, I really do.
Well, you still have questions?
No, no.
I had two more questions, but I'm glad to let you go. When we, it talks here about 20% operations and maintenance, one FTE and management agreement. Who would manage sports facilities that were done by the county CBB?
We probably would hire, probably have to hire
Wouldn't be under the Parks Department, it would be under some kind of county, okay?
Again, I think this is a working document.
Right.
We're not saying it's gonna be 20.
Right, right.
They didn't actually say any of this.
Well, when you're done, I gotta come in afterwards.
This was Judge Klimmer and Jim and Stephen.
Well, I appreciate you putting something on paper, it's very helpful. And then, Mayor, you mentioned coming back to the recreation complex, because we don't see that on here.
Do you, I'm sorry, did
No, go ahead.
Is something going on over there?
No, go ahead.
Do you need to say something?
No.
Are you sure?
Go ahead.
I have a question whenever you
Sorry, Commissioner McElroy was still
In terms of the recreation complex, you said we would come back to that, because we don't see that on here at all, in terms of aquatic center and that kind of
We must circle back on it.
Okay.
We're finished, yeah.
Thanks.
And Commissioner Wilson's been waiting, is that okay?
Sure.
Well, I had a question, but in reality, you could switch this and put county role at the top and city role at the top. If we all don't care about who gets the credit for the new sportsplex, if we all can agree, like in that interlocal, four-way interlocal agreement, that these are the priorities, we wanna continue what we have been doing, we have to pay the debt that we have on the bonds for the Carson Center and the new expo, that expo center that's now owed, but that we borrowed money four years ago, and that's being paid for by the CBB, we have to do all of those things. So we really could swap them, but this is just the draft, as you've pointed out, Commissioner Baltimore, this is the draft of where we've, a starting point for us.
Yeah, we gotta start somewhere.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
On the transient room taxation, you got another 1% for convention center operation. Are we gonna give them another $400,000 a year to operate with?
I think that's still one of those last-minute things that we put on there when we were talking to the county attorney about the possibility of it, but we haven't had that conversation any further than what you see on this document, so I don't know the answer to your question.
That's broken down by the statute is
Yeah, but I mean, there's a lot of private businesses out here that like to have that $33,000 a month to operate on, I mean, you know?
Well, I mean, again, that's, the statute says 3% for the, for the sports, for us, be 3% for the sports, 1% for the convention center operations by statute, and then 2% for debt service.
Right, so we're already giving them 1%, correct?
Right.
So we're giving them 400,000 a year, and it said we wanna give them another 400,000 a year for operational expenses, right?
It's a possibility, according to this document.
But we don't have to collect that tax?
No, we do not have to do that.
Okay.
That's right.
Which we reduce it to 9%.
Absolutely.
The total.
Yeah, we do not have to do it. Commissioner Baltimore?
I think, I like the comment you made, that I think we need to, I think we all can agree on what our priorities are in recreation. We may not agree on what's number one and what's number two, but I think there's four or five priorities I think we all can agree on, you know, from the, as they say, the 10,000-foot level when we look down on it. I think if we get, try to get down in the weeds and try to do all the planning that we're gonna put baseball fields here and softball fields there, I think it's too early to do that. I'd like us to just begin the mechanism of creating the two boards, and then before we finalize it, we can identify, at least from a high level, like you mentioned, of where the funds will come from to do these things. I don't want us to get into some kind of an agreement that two years from now, we find out we made a mistake, we've gotta kind of redo it and creates other problems, but I think we can agree on what the priorities are, and our number-one priority is, I'm not saying it is, but it might be soccer fields, number two might be baseball fields, number three might be softball fields, number four might be aquatic facilities, and the Eddie Jones sportsplex, or, you know, I think we can all agree on what the priorities are. We don't even really have to
Here's my drink, hang on.
Have to write. I think we all can agree on what those are, and then go ahead and form the board, and boards, and then we can come up with an agreement on how we're gonna pay for, who's gonna be responsible for what. I hate to try to, although I'd like to, it's not our role to micromanage every penny that's spent by those organizations. You know, they're, as you mentioned in a conversation we had, that we don't need to get down in the weeds and try to tell them, the experts, how to spend tourism money, but I think we just need to start at the high level, define what our priorities are, and then as we go on, we form the boards. On the comment you made on the convention center, I think we need to take a look at the operation of the convention center, because I think there's potential of some of that's gonna have to be subsidized by city and county government. We might take a look at having at least some percentage of, maybe not a full percent, but maybe a half percent, an additional half percent to help fund that, to make it viable. But again, I just think we need to look at it from the high level and then do the details after we get the boards together. But we need to get on with this and start it as soon as we can.
I'd like to see a comparison, and I think we will compare very favorably, even with the increase in the transit room tax with other communities, because it, you know, I don't have a lot of experiences staying in different hotels around the country, but I lived in Frankfurt for three months a year for six years, and I think their room tax is a whole lot higher than what this would even be with the increase. And other hotels I've stayed in other cities, it's not, Mary?
It will compare to large cities. I have looked at, there's some private companies out there that do a comparison. I can, if I can get my hands on it again, I'll send it to you. But we get up there close to the large cities if we do this.
Pensacola knows a lot, lot higher than
It gets close to Pensacola, it gets close to the larger
We pay here, but I agree with the judge, you know, whatever the rate is, I think the hotels and motels around are gonna benefit much more than they might be hurt by an extra 3% increase in a room's nights lodging with all the added people who will come and stay here from the, from the sports tournaments that we will be hosting, and so, but I would like to see how we do compare, and I think it would be favorably even with the increase. But anyway.
Well, just to put a fine point on it, I'm not sure we could legally do what Jim has proposed with regard to committing that we would use 70% for debt service without the advice and consent of a new commission. And that commission is by law set up to give the hotel industry, they get a big voice, one person from the chamber, one person from restaurants, but three from the hotel, and they have to believe that it's gonna be good for their industry, that's the reason they're on there. And I guess my, you know, again, I don't like having this conversation in public either, but I guess that's just the way, that's what we've been elected to do, is have this public conversation in public. If we can't agree on how the county's gonna spend its money, or how the city, does that, does that put us at an impasse of, well, then we're just not gonna do it? And I guess that's, if I'm counting votes, I think there are three of us not so interested in committing to borrowing $10 million for an unnamed, undesigned recreation something. I think we would feel the need to be farther down the road before we committed to that.
There's a reason why we separated that conversation away from this conversation, is so that we, as a city commission, could be having a conversation about that indoor recreation facility separate than this conversation, not mainly because I understood that there was not very much interest on your all's behalf. So what we actually, from my perspective, when we came to the table to have this conversation on this piece of paper, you know, Stuart Nelson has long been dreamed of as the baseball-s softball place, and we've had plans on the books for 20 years to do it, and we've never pulled the trigger and did it. And so from my perspective, that was already in our pipeline. We had a city commission retreat back in January where we all sat around the room and said, our number-one priority is sports and recreation. And so we were on the path, and when this came along, it seems like a great opportunity for all of us to kind of rise together to accomplish some of those goals. So I hope that makes sense, but the recreation conversation is not on here on purpose.
And I guess that's where maybe I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to figure out, when it says 70% for new debt, construction of sports complexes estimated to generate $10 million for a 20-year bond, that, well, that scares me a little bit, because I don't, I don't know how to agree to that, because I don't know what that's going to do, but I don't know what that's going to build, and that's
So if you go one section above, it says desired sports complex, three, three items, baseball, softball, soccer.
So it would not
But we don't know if $10 million can get us that. I mean, that's still where we're, I think
So you're not asking us to use this, these funds for a rec center?
No, not at all.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Commissioner Trump, I think any of us know that.
Just part, part of that conversation we had there as a group, and I give you credit for saying that I, this is, this isn't mine. I'm just the author of the, I just pinned, this is a combination of three meetings putting together a bunch of discussions just like this. It took multiple hours. The, the intent for this was to use this to meet the need of the outdoor recreation facilities, those tournament-worthy fields for baseball, softball, and soccer. And nothing of this is going to happen with the indoor recreation aquatic facility that we talked about here tonight at the beginning of this, when we had the presentations from the lectern. Right, Judge? The lectern?
Right.
Not a podium, a lectern. Yes. The, so what we're talking about here is just outdoor, realizing that we have multiple needs. We've had this conversation in the city as well about what is our priority? Is it going to be the indoor aquatic facility? Or is it going to be these outdoor competition fields for baseball and softball? And the answer we came up to was both. But then we talked about how to figure out a way to have a revenue source to pay for that. As the judge talked about before, a lot of these things we'd love to have, just having the ability to pay for them. We've seen this opportunity that you brought to the table as a way to partner in order for us to be able to capitalize on basically making sure that the residents, I shouldn't say the residents, but the, the teams that are traveling away, as was mentioned here before, when I talked to the group about how I was at the Chair in the Park apartment complex on a Saturday morning, and I seen a young family come out of the apartment complex and a young man with his baseball bag and bats getting into his car. And I knew, and it was kind of embarrassing to me because I knew he wasn't going down to Stewart Nelson Park to play. He was leaving town. They were leaving town probably for the weekend to go to a baseball tournament. And that's what we're trying to capture here. It's for the baseball, softball tournaments and the soccer tournaments that are leaving town. We're trying to capture those in town. It's not for the indoor aquatic facility.
Well, I feel immediately better.
Well, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Judge. I guess before we do take this plunge here, we need to decide what our priorities are. And I, it sounds like we all agreed here, and that's what Commissioner Bartman said a minute ago, a few minutes ago. I, that's where I'm headed. I, we need soccer, softball, baseball fields, and then an aquatic center. That seems to be the highest priority that I hear from this community and I'm aware of because the facilities are so inferior that we have in these areas. That, to me, has to be the highest priority. So, if we're all in agreement there, then, then we can probably move forward.
What about the fact that some of the property we may want to develop will not be inside the city limits? Would, how do we kind of, have we addressed that? Is that going to be a requirement that anything that gets developed has to be in the city?
I don't think it's a requirement. I think that for our community's sake, I mean, it's not a requirement. Let me just start there. I think that the way we have those conversations in a more practical manner, though, hard to understand the costs associated with different locations, right?
Absolutely.
I think we have to use facts and information to have that conversation. And we can have a values conversation all day long. I think Stewart Nelson is a really awesome historic place in Paducah that deserves to be the home of that baseball softball complex. That's just my personal valued statement. But I don't know, is it more expensive to build it there than it is in some, you know, random lot out in the middle of nowhere? And then there's also the conversation, how do you, how do you make sure that it is a tourism attraction and not, you know, not just another set of fields? And so, can you do that inside the city? There's all kinds of conversations. But I think we need the cost estimates before we can really have that conversation, frankly. I did want to also mention that, you know, we have funding in the budget, $750,000 that we've set aside to start designing. And there's been a discussion about can we start designing that baseball softball complex with those funds in addition to the recreation center? And so, we're still having to figure out what's it really going to cost us to design those things? And I think that's a real tangible conversation that we could be having together is, could we design all of them in the same, in the same timeline so that we're talking about real design? I mean, design takes a long time, and my fear is that we're going to keep having this conversation in this theoretical way and not start designing. That's a six-to-eight-month process. You can't speed it up. There's just no way. You're talking about construction documents and all kinds of things have to come out of that. So, I think, you know, we are willing to put that money in to get that process started, and I hope sooner than later, frankly, so that we can maybe do these things parallel. I mean, they're going to have to happen chaotically, I'd imagine.
And then the discussion we've had with, I've been with the mayor and the city manager and Deputy Doolittle and others, and we've talked through all these things and trying to, and to Commissioner Bartman's point about we don't need to get down in the weeds right now. We just felt like there'd be some value to sort of flesh this out somewhat. Develop, so what's the city tourism commission going to be looking like? What's the county's? And just kind of spitballing and saying, well, how would this work? What would this do? I think we've progressed through that fairly well, but it could all change. But we did give a lot of thought, I think, to the fact that the current CBB has a lot of knowledge and experience in promotions. So, that would inherently be best practice for them. And then the county do what we've got laid out here, acquisition, preparation, maintenance of the sports facilities, and just kind of get fleshed out. But the one important thing to remember is, in fact, we talked about, do we need to wait and really get this narrowed down? And so, we've got really specifics, or do we need to go ahead and create these commissions? Because I feel like we all know we're going to do this. It's just, and so, why are we waiting on, on getting the funding source together? We lose $100,000 a month as we sit and try to decide what the ultimate product is going to be as opposed to getting the money, start banking it, and we'll see. We'll get some firm numbers and see how it develops. And I don't think you can argue with trying to get this enacted and done as quickly as possible to start getting some revenue. And then I just really do feel like it's going to perpetuate itself, and it will see that it's, it was a true idea. True idea.
I'm generally for it.
I think we all agree to go ahead and start setting up where we can, can collect the money. I mean, that's not an issue. We're, we're just going to have to get together and work out the details.
Yeah.
And I feel better. I, I don't know why.
I got to ask you a question.
Okay, all right, fine. Go ahead.
Are we going to have to buy a sportsplex?
Well, maybe.
That wasn't the answer I gave you.
No, I agree with you.
There's $12,000 a month in operating expenses if you call it a convention center.
That's true. It, it needs to, I'm not, you know, we just simply need to do the cost analysis. And I don't want something to be off-limits because it's not in the city. And, and I'm willing to be open to other options. I think it's a good used car that we could get. It meets our needs right away. But if there's a, if there's a better option, I'm willing to look at it.
Well, it reminds me of something Dr. Reese says a lot when he's giving speeches, and he always says, he stole this from someone, but he always says, "Begin with the end in mind." And that's why I think coming to some high-level, if you want to call it an agreement, I don't know what else to call it, but some high-level vision, let me call it a vision, how about that? Of where we're going is so key here because once the money starts flowing, the politics start coming. And I am scared that our community is going to have another false start. This is, I don't even know what number of false start this is for our community on this conversation. It's probably three or four, five or six.
It's 30 years' worth.
Yes. And so, we have to be committed that we will not let the politics get in the way of accomplishing this. And I think that is, I think we're all, I'm seeing the heads nod. And if we can do this in a way that uses real costs and real data and real information, then I think we're going to be in a great place. I really do believe that. And I love working with all you guys. I think it's going to be great. We're going to have a great vision for what we, what we can accomplish.
I think the issue is in the past when it stopped was because there was no money for infrastructure and no money for operating cost. And now that we have a source for infrastructure and operating cost, I think, I think we can, we can do it. I don't think it'll be, I don't think it's going to be nearly as difficult. And, and I'm, you know, politics gets involved in everything, and politics isn't always a bad thing. It can be a good thing.
That's very true.
If it's political input from residents on what they need. And if we do what's right, if we need to do something that will help 1,500 kids who play soccer or 200 kids that play rugby, you know, it's a pretty easy decision on how we need to do that. But I agree, I think we need to start the process. We need to come up with a, the vision, and I think that's a good term to call it, a vision of what we want to do. And then when we maybe have a little money in the bank, we can maybe use some of that money to help do more detailed planning than, and help. And then we have to decide how we're going to operate it, you know? Is it going to be operated, if we have facilities that are going to be operated by Paducah Parks or McCracken County Parks, if we create a staff, or do we create a joint park system? There are other things down in the weeds we have to plan, but I think we need to start now to begin collecting the money and have the vision, and then get down in the weeds with our lawnmower later on.
Any other statements about the, this discussion?
We got some folks that want to speak.
We have one public comment. And let me do my promise of wrapping back on the recreation center really quick. This will be a conversation that I think we'll have more in depth at a commission meeting in the future. But we will start on RFQs for design. We've all agreed to that. For the budget, after it passes, we'll have that funding dedicated. The city manager did send out a new fairly aggressive timeline that I think the Friends of the Parks has seen now, which is a little bit sooner than Dr. Patel alluded to earlier from his meeting the other night. And so, we talked about it today. It's, it is aggressive, and it might hurt. But, but I do believe that we're committed to getting this done. I also want to say that I think our community has really got to help us and realize that this is an investment in our community. I mean, if you saw the meetings and the, and the news coverage from both of our commissions, you saw that we are running short because of the state pension crisis, that we're being asked to commit funds that we have never had to commit before because of the state pension issue. And so, I applaud everyone up here for being willing to actually think about investing and not just crawling into the recluse hole and saying, oh, no, we're out of money because of the state pension crisis. So, kudos, seriously. And it's an honor to be working with people who believe that we have to do that three-legged stool approach. We have to invest in ourselves. We have to cut our expenses. And sometimes we've got to ask for help, which means possibly raising revenue like this transit room tax we're talking about tonight. So, thank you all for that. And I hope that the community can at least start to dig in with us because I think this is going to take all of us understanding the level of investment it's going to create. But I agree that this could be a game changer and a population recruiter that we've been waiting for. And I, I think it's time, time to go. Do you have something to add?
I was just going to say, I think as soon as the city has a plan, we have something to offer the community, Friends of the Parks specifically. You can't ask people for money for something that's just pie in the sky. They've got to see some plans. And we are a very generous commi, community. If you look at people's names all over this community, there's money out there. I am very confident in it, but we have got to move forward with plans so that we have something to ask them for. So, I'm excited about that.
I think it's clear, too, that if we don't do it this way, nothing will happen. Because like you mentioned, the, the pension crisis, the city and the county, over the years, we've all paid our share into the pension fund, and the state didn't pay its share. Now they're asking us to make up what they didn't pay. So, our taxpayers and citizens are going to have to make that up, and we don't have any choice.
Right.
But they're going to force us to do that. But if we don't do this, we won't be able to do anything.
Right.
And, and it may even cause a detriment to what we do have, even though it may not be a Cadillac. It was a, a used Ford, maybe, but I mean, it, it...
Best city in the world, Bill.
We just have...
Commissioner. It's not a tax just on our citizens. I mean, it's, it's tourism-related, and it's, it impacts our tourism.
And I think the reality is, when you get a, when I get a hotel room in Louisville or Lexington or anywhere, I look at the base rate and don't worry about the tax because you don't have any control over the tax. So, you know, if you pay $100 a night...
When I buy from hotels.com, it's always a shock what the final number is. I still pay it. I still pay it, and I still go there.
I mean, in Washington, what is it, 17 or 20% or something like that? But anyway, that's...
It's high. All right, we're going to move into public comment, if that's okay with everyone, because I think it's getting late. Has anyone yawned yet?
I move that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended insofar as they are in conflict with the printed agenda for this meeting. Otherwise, the rules are to remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. There you go.
I move to adopt Commissioner Wilson's motion.
I thought that's what we already did.
We're doing it and doing it again.
Doing it again.
With this issue.
We usually like to do things once, but...
Well, now you're going to do it twice.
Oh, in favor, aye. Those know. All right, we're with you.
Whatever it is.
All right. Jay Patel is here. And again, if anyone else has any comment about this specific discussion, you can go fill out a form and bring it up.
I guess my name is Jay Patel. I'm the Comfort Inn on Exit 3 and also building the Comfort Suites on Exit 4. I guess my question this to you guys is, how much tax are you going to tax the hotels? You basically doubling our taxes. I mean, my business for the last 16 months is down. Have you ever thought about the negative impact of this tax to the hotels? If the hotel goes bankrupt, you guys are going to bank, bail us out? I mean, I understand what you guys do, trying to do, I have no problem with that. But why you put everything on the hotels for? We pay a lot of taxes, down to 1% payroll, down to property tax, down to everything. How much tax are you going to keep taxing us?
Does anyone have a response?
I guess I do have some questions. I wondered if you could give us insight as to how much of your customer base is related to sports-related activities? And if we were to take, but let's presume for a minute that we do create this fund and we do ask you to pay more tax, and I presume you're going to pass that on to your, your customers. All right. What, what would be the best use of that money to increase your revenue? Because that's the goal, and if we're not using it in that way...
Let's take, for example, the quilt show.
Okay.
Okay? 2016 was the best year everybody had.
2016?
2016. But if you look back at 2016 to 2017, 2018, 2019, this year, our revenues are down compared to those years. People do notice those taxes, you know? I mean, look at the, people come to for the quilt show. Every year, the numbers are going down. It's, it's not just the Paducah, but it's also other factors, tax, down to what cost to get to the, get into the Paducah area and all that stuff. Those, those do affect, when people have limited income, how do we keep taxing more and more? We go business, we go business-wise, we put on a business expense, you know? Like you said, just look at the $8 or $100 and don't look at the tax. But a lot of people do look at the tax. You know, the worker who comes in town, works, he's going to look at how much tax he's going to pay. Because it does affect his payroll. Because nowadays, and he, you know, he's going to say, well, I'm paying this, I can go to Metropolis where I'm paying 11% tax. But go down, just down, further down to Calver City or down that area, less than 10% on that area. So, you're going to lose people. You're going to lose revenue from that.
But what is your customer base?
Ours, ours mostly is transit. Our people who go from one place to another, then we have some construction, then quilt show makes up some of it as well, and like conventions like that, like Metropolis has a super in terms of this year. We're hardly filled up. Last year, we were filled up because people are not traveling with, things are traveling there. People are cutting back, and people are going to the bigger cities. Where our tax, like you said, it's going to be up there at the big cities, and we're a small town.
Do you think that tax affects the rate, or is it the, your nightly...
Tax does affect the rate because nowadays, there's, like, my, my brand Comfort Inn is a mid-scale brand, right? I'm capped at 80 to 90 bucks. I cannot, if I go any above that, I always customize stuff for somebody else.
Let me ask you a question. I checked on Travelocity. It just happened that I looked at the, at your hotel, and I didn't know you were here. If I stay there tomorrow night, it's $79 a night. If I stay there in April during the quilt show, it's $415 a night, according to Travelocity.
Yeah, but that's, that's only temporary until, because there's other stuff involved that we get tour buses and all that stuff. That's, we brings that down rate completely down, more than 50% of that down.
So, if I look on there and I see the $415 rate, that's...
I have zero reservation for that time.
Pardon me?
Right, I have zero reservation for that quilt show for next year because I'm waiting for the tour buses and all that. That's my goal.
But that's what the rate is set at. I mean, it...
Yeah, I mean, the rate's...
He's saying it's the tour buses, though.
It's, it's, the tour buses, we set the higher rate. Just whoever books it, books them, okay? That's for quilt showing. You're talking about how many weeks? You're talking about three days of the year. three days of the year. Three days of the year.
You mentioned your occupancy was down during the quilt show.
Yes, it was.
And it may have been because of the rate. When people look on there, that.
Everybody was down this year. If you look at the numbers, have you guys looked at the numbers for the, for the Paducah, for the quilt show? Numbers are down. Strongly suggest, talk to, the numbers are down every year.
Do you think a little bit of that is the Airbnb phenomenon?
Yes, that's part of it, too.
I think there's like almost 300 Airbnb.
300, plus, they don't play same rules that we do. We have to follow health codes and everything else. Those guys don't follow health codes and everything.
Yeah, that's a challenge for the whole hotel industry in general.
Yeah, but one of the things, you know, you guys need to make a level playing field for us.
Could we tax the Airbnbs then?
We are.
We are taxing them. We just aren't collecting.
As of June 1st. The state actually has the agreement with Airbnb, and we get that.
But, I mean, you guys, don't look at hotels as the only tax room. There's other places you guys can look for the revenue. I mean, we're, I mean, there's so many, I mean, hotels are not just one place, you know?
Yeah, the one, one thing that's attractive about this tax is because it's designed to promote your industry. We are, we are obligated by statute to spend the money we collect through the transient tax in a way that will put little girls with volleyball and soccers in your.
Last three years, I'm building a brand new hotel that's gonna have me with higher expenses, you know?
I'm sorry, what?
I'm building a new hotel on exit four right now.
Right.
My base was based on 2016 numbers. And I'll base my numbers right now, I'd be lucky if I break even. With all the costs and everything, labor costs, everything going up, how much, how much, how much the hotel's gonna bear? I mean, we're the only one looking to get in the hit with it. We're not the only person benefiting. Everybody's benefiting. Restaurants, down to gas station, everybody's benefiting this, other person stays in the hotel. Person goes restaurant, doesn't, hotel doesn't benefit one bit of it, you know? Person goes to a gas station, fill gas, hotel doesn't benefit from it. But a person stays hotel, the restaurant benefits from it, the gases benefit, everybody benefits from that. You can't just use the hotel as only source of revenue. You ask for other places, revenues on that. We have no objection to it, but you need to be more of a, like a community thing. You guys said, as a community, we all need to pitch in. Why are the hotels the only one pitching in every time? Why not not pitching restaurants? Or there's a, I'm sure there's ways to do, you guys can put other tax on there.
Unfortunately, we can't do the restaurant tax. You've probably heard us say that, but.
But my question is to you is, how about if, dude, revenue does go down? Your projection is a million to 1.2 million, right, for the county? How about if the revenue does go down? How about if below, goes below a million dollars?
That'd be a problem.
So what the hotel's gonna do? I mean, the hotels are struggling, basically. You guys gonna bail us out then? Use the money it gives back to us so we can pay our bills?
The question is, is do, if you think we, if we end up with six soccer tournament-type fields, and we end up with securing volleyball tournaments, do you think you would get any of those customers?
No.
You don't think those teams would stay?
Because, because Tim has, we know Tim as well, too, at Plex. Tim at Plex, we know him as, he owns terms all the time, volleyball tournaments, as well as soccer, indoor soccer tournaments, all that stuff. My hotel has not seen none of that business.
The one on exit 11?
Yeah.
What about the ones on exit four, though?
I have no idea. Because I'm on exit 11, I'm building one exit four right now. So maybe.
You might find out.
Yeah? Maybe until, I guess, maybe this year, hopefully this year or next year, I don't know.
Yeah, we think exit 11 probably would be far away for you to build.
Well, exit, exit 11, well, I'm on exit three.
Three.
I'm on exit three. So I'm, actually, my location is all that easy to get to Plex, because you take the back road without taking all the traffic lights and everything else, like my exit, exit three does. But, I mean, my thing is, how much can you keep taxing? You know, we're, I mean, trying to help us in a day, but also, there's other people benefiting out of this as well, too. There needs to be a fair level taxation to everybody else. We have, we have no problem putting our share into it. But in a day, you guys got to figure out how can everybody, restaurants, down to gas station, they got to pay their fair share as well, too.
And maybe if we do.
Back to the restaurant tax, we can't do.
No, but I'm saying, but I'm saying, I know, but I'm saying, but, yeah, but I'm saying is, why are the hotels are always the first in line for tax?
Well, it is really designed to help you and to expand your business.
But last three years has not helped us. If you look at the numbers, I'm sure CBS will share numbers. The numbers are down for Paducah market. We're down this year.
And that may be an argument for us to do this, then, to increase usage in the community.
But it takes time.
And have tournaments where people use the hotels.
But it takes time. Even if you do this right here, how, how long will we see the benefit out of it? My question. Because between you guys, there's no agreement between you guys right now.
There's no what?
No agreement between you guys on how you're gonna run the, how you use the money and everything else, between the city and the county.
Ah, we'll get there. We'll have.
That's always the case. You know what thing, everybody says, we'll get there. We want to see on paper, and when it's signed, then it always got, gotten there. Politics works different than business. Business, in a day, you make the number. Politics takes time because of, politics involved. It, it never gets done in time. It's always over budget, and it never happens. A lot of times, it's just people just say, yeah, we can do it. But what the money sits there is gonna basically used for something else. I've seen that happen before, because we have other hotels and other communities where they have this tax, 5%. Money sitting there, always drawing CD with 5%, a couple percent interest on it.
We have a tourism commission that spends 1.2 million dollars a year promoting the community to bring tourists in. And if that money wouldn't, wasn't spent and used the way it is, the hotels would not be as full as what they are. So.
But I remember back in the days, I've been here at this airport since 1980.
The tax that's paid is, is helping the hotels.
But this is the thing about, I was, I mean, my family moved in Charleston, Missouri in 1980. When you had the quilt show back then, 50-mile radius, the hotels are filled up. 50-mile radius. Today, Paducah Bay gets filled up.
I suspect that is an Airbnb issue.
Yeah, part of it.
Because the actual participant numbers haven't really changed that much from the quilt show perspective.
It's changed. You'd be surprised how many people, when you say the rates, you would say $400, yeah, those rates, if you put jewelry on there, they got the same rates I do have right now. Same thing as Hampton, anybody else. It's, it's, right now, that, if you can't look back, that, those rates are, it will change dramatically. We're day-to-day operations. It's like airlines today. If you put your airline today, put a price, let's say, go to Chicago, yeah, today it'll show you $200. But if you wait six months down the line, it's gonna show you $400. That's how it works. It's gotten so complicated in our industries, it's hard for us to make money today, because in a day, so much factors involved in it today.
Why are you building another one?
Based on 2016 figures. I wish I can get out of it. When you got certain amount of money, it can't go back. When you invested so much, certain amount of money, when you invest on land and time and all that stuff, there's no turning point back when you have that. You know, when you invest 1.1 million dollars on land and everything else, you can't stop it. You have to build it.
So you've had two seasons that have showed you some down numbers since then?
Yes.
Two, two years, basically?
Two years, plus the third year for the quilt show, this, this year.
How, do you get those numbers monthly? Do you get the numbers monthly?
For my hotels, I.
But do you know the overall revenue that the CBB brings in?
I don't know the overall, the serial revenue brings in, but other hotels like us, my, we.
You get the occupancy numbers every month, the star rating, yeah.
Yeah, we get the star rating, and then we have, compare a hotel with the high-end, like the Hamptons, everything else. And the numbers are down.
Yeah, yeah.
I also serve on the convention center board, and about two years ago, I met with three or four managers individually of hotels at, out by the mall area, to ask them if they would be willing to give discount rates to help try to get conventions to come to Paducah. And they said their occupancy rate is so high without those conventions, that they were not in a position to be able to offer discount rates. And they had a program in their computer that they can predict what their occupancy rate was gonna be a year from now, because of trends and, and things going on, and things like that. But, but they said their occupancy rate's so high that they couldn't offer any discount rates.
Have you talked to them recently?
Pardon me?
Have you talked to them recently?
That, I assume, I haven't talked to them in a, that was about a year, year and a half ago.
Talk to them recently now, and see what they tell you, tone right now.
Well, the taxes and all, it's a tax of.
What tax? I'm saying, business generally all. Talk to them recently right now, and see what they say right now.
So you think if somebody would have to pay $3 more for a room at your hotel, that they might drive to Gilbertsville?
Or Metropolis.
Drive into Paducah and use more gas, and you think that they would go somewhere else?
Well, if they're going somewhere else, if they're going towards Nashville, what's the, what's 10 minutes' drive? What's if you're going towards Chicago, what's 2 minutes' drive to Metropolis, when you go to a casino? And the casino gives you $39.
The other thing that's interesting to me about the occupancy rate is the market saturation. So anytime you, because we've had several new hotels built, right, in the last two or three years?
Right.
And when you add that kind of supply, the demand has to catch up, right? So I'm, that's kind of what you do in business, right?
Right.
You take a risk, because you're hoping that the demand is gonna catch up. So I, can you probably give a little bit of credit to the fact that we oversaturated pretty quickly in Paducah, and then maybe we gotta let the demand catch up a little bit to the supply?
Yeah, I'll give a little bit of that, but in a day, I mean, our rates are down. That's the other factor of it, you know? I'm operating between, right now, compared to 2016.
Because your demand is down, because the supply is so much.
Yeah, so I mean, that $15 rate probably is getting additional per room. I'm not getting that no more.
Yeah. You've got a lot of options in Paducah now.
And like mine, I have mostly senior citizens that go from one to, basically, what they do is what they call early birds, where they go from winter months to the summer. And we've seen less and less people, because they're on fixed income. You lose all those people. And that $3, say, $3, $3 buys you a gallon of gas. If you drive a pretty efficient car, that's enough to go down to Calver City or Metropolis.
Well, I want to say thank you for your investment. Seriously, thank you for building a new hotel on exit four. I don't want you to think that we take that for granted. And thank you for being here tonight to share your, obviously, your industry expertise with us. Does anyone else have any comments or?
I would just like to see a comparison of different hotel, motel transit tax rates for communities that would compare to Paducah, just to kind of see where we would be.
Thank you for your investment.
You have that? Yeah. Thank you, Jay, so much for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Nine o'clock. Wow, this is my bedtime.
Really gonna talk about 911 now?
No, we're not gonna have a long discussion about 911. We're just gonna give an update, a really quick update.
Yeah.
Really short, less than one minute. We have a meeting scheduled with the sheriff, the police chief, the deputy judge, city manager, myself, and Judge Executive next week, to continue our conversation about 911. If you all remember back in the, I guess that was wintertime, we had a joint meeting and talked about what that might look like. So we're gonna circle back on it, and then we'll bring it back to you guys at a, at a later date. So just wanted to give you an update. Okay?
Let me, let me fill this out. We didn't really talk about, we talked this morning about things, but would, would it be of a value, should we, I think that we're saying that we're all on board with progressing with this, sort of a, either a vote or a straw pole or something, is, or even, is there, are there any one of us that thinks we should do something other than, than progress as quickly as we responsibly can in setting up these two CVBs, and getting this done, and getting some money banked? And is there, I think that'd be valuable to know that. It's one of the things I did not know. But I, I mean, I think we're all on board. Is that right? As far as, if we can, if we can find the.
I'm really interested in that extra 1% before I'm 100% on board. These guys are telling us not to drive the prices higher, and we're wanting to give a convention center another 12,000 a month for operating.
No one's wanting to do that, Commissioner Parker. It was just on the table. It's just on the list.
I'd like to see what it looks like then, offering.
We got your, we got your statement.
But I mean, even, even that, even the meat on the bones can wait. It's, the question really is, given that we could tax less than this, and we can't do more, or we could tax less, we don't know exactly how it's gonna look. I mean, are we all for, for on board with going forward with it as quickly as we can? And we all are. And do you feel like, are you comfortable in taking that count?
Can I have a Hail Mary over there?
That's how I ask it.
What'd you say?
I think we want to continue.
Mr. Abraham's language.
Yeah.
Move forward.
Looking at that with those CVBs.
Have a conversation.
I don't think we can vote, but to look at the CVBs, yes.
You don't have any.
We need to make sure that structure's there, and it's legal.
Yeah. Everybody, all of you are on board with moving as quickly as we can. And I don't frankly know, sitting here right now, but I'll find out what, what's left to legally go forward, what's our next steps, and.
Anytime we talk about, I mean, I can tell you what David Dent and Glenn Dent are gonna say, that we've got to talk to the bond attorney. And we will have to look at the bonds as to whether this action will require, I don't, it's certainly not gonna put bondholders at a worse position, because we'll actually be increasing the revenue. But by changing the structure, will that somehow creates some sort of need to refinance the existing bonds that are paid for under the 2%?
That's a mechanism thing.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's, it's not a showstopper.
All right, we ready to go to bed?
It's been a really long day.
All right, I guess I'll adjourn first, if that's okay with you. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1757.28]